All right, we are, we are ready.
Oh, geez. For Amy.
Yep, trustee fair, we are, we're ready to have you start the audit meeting.
She can hear.
Amy, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, we're ready to start the audit meeting.
Okay. So, welcome to the 194th meeting of the Audit Committee of Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District. We have a roll call, please.
I will note that all the trustees are present. Thank you.
And can I get a motion for approval of the minutes from the 193rd meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second, so the minutes are approved. Comments by the chair, I have none today, so we'll move to internal audit, please.
All right, and Todd Loretta is here, he's going to present the review of DEC.
Yep. Good morning, everybody. So, we will use the PowerPoint presentation to go with our report. I guess it'd be up on the screen. This was a review of the Division Environmental Compliance, there were three divisions. There's some fairly technical errors in here, so if there's some questions you have, and if I can't answer them, I'm going to defer to, you have Jay Hoskins here from DEC, he manages DEC, now obviously Rich is here from Engineering, Rich, I may defer some questions to them as well, so if you have any questions, don't hesitate. If you open, if you can move to page two, first I just want to give you a little overview of the DEC, and how it's organized, and how it works, it's an area that we talk about a lot. DEC was first established in 1988, in response to increasing the number of regulations and other obligations for protecting the environment. It is currently a division of the Engineering Department. I think way back in the beginning, it might have been under operations, but it's been under Engineering for quite, quite some time. At a high level, DEC's three basic objectives are to ensure the district management has an adequate understanding of all environmental requirements or regulations, and also to ensure the district operations activities comply with those regulations, to ensure any sources of water pollution within the district boundaries are identified and properly addressed. What's, the last one could involve, you know, our customers or other, or other individuals, so we are responsible for monitoring our system and the waterways around, so just still doing, point that out. Moving on to slide three, a little bit more about the overall structure of DEC. DEC has approximately 47 employees. It is divided into five overall units or groups. You can see the five there. Now, the first three are actually part of the scope for this audit. Regulatory Affairs Unit, that group, their focus is to manage and oversee the environmental compliance for the district's various facilities. There are numerous permits that apply to those facilities, it is their job to track all that and make sure we stay in compliance. Then there's the Stormwater Unit, obviously in its name, they're, they're responsible for overseeing the stormwater system. As we are, what we call a coordinating authority, there is a MS4 stormwater permit that is issued by MDNR. It is addressed to the district, also St. Louis County, and then approximately 60 other entities are covered by that, by that permit. So basically, it's a kind of a team effort, but MSD leads the charge in that area. The other entities would be entities such as like, you know, Kirkwood, Westerboro, Shrewsbury, Richmond Heights, basically all the municipalities within St. Louis County are under that permit. And as part of that, the Stormwater Unit develops and submits a stormwater management plan, which contains the details of how they're going to meet the six minimum control measures that are required by the permit, and that unit oversees that process. Then you have the Emergency Response Unit, they are responsible for investigating, initiating corrective actions when untreated sewage leaves our system and gets into the environment. They also inspect, hope was on the first three groups, the Regulatory Affairs, Stormwater, and Emergency Response Unit. We did audit those groups back in 2015. The industrial pretreatment and lab groups will be audited in FY '22, so basically next fiscal year. Now, we did audit the pretreatment group in 2017. The scope period for this audit was 1/1/18 through December 31, '19, so it was a two-year period for the transactions that we looked at. Move on to page, slide five. A little overview, just reminding everybody how the system works, how it's set up, there is a combined system of waste, wastewater and stormwater, which basically, you have the same, you have wastewater and stormwater in the same pipe. That is in St. Louis City and adjacent portion of St. Louis County, that water is carried to our treatment plants, and you have the sanitary system, which is wastewater only, that is most of St. Louis County, and that water is also carried to our treatment plants. Then you have the stormwater system, which is stormwater only, and that is most of St. Louis County, and that water is not carried to our sanitary, to our treatment plants, it is carried into the streams, into the rivers. So we do have seven treatment plants, two biggest being Lima and Bissell, three maintenance yards, and so basically for each one of these sites, there are, there are one or more permits containing requirements or regulations that have to be met by the district. So there's a lot of permits related to these sites. Move on to page, or slide six, so the objectives, the overall objectives engagement would ensure, in general, the DEC procedures are designed and managed to provide the district with the ability to maintain compliance with the various environmental regulations. We wanted to make sure that DEC systems and processes in place, are in place to maintain a complete and up-to-date, up-to-date database of the various environmental requirements, there's, there's a lot of them, including the stormwater permit, there's approximately 45 different permits, ranging in length from two pages to about 130 pages, so some of them are quite lengthy, and there's a lot, a lot of material in these permits, a lot of regulations. We wanted to make sure their systems are, you know, are in place that are effective in tracking and captioning and communicating information regarding, for Regulatory Affairs Unit, we want to make sure that we're able to track all the compliance requirements and the related tasks, we're making sure we know what's open, what's been completed, including training, any notice of violations that might be received, and the responses that we, you know, that are required. Yeah, we didn't see very many of those in this, in this audit, I think it's, they do a really good job, and it's also part, partially related to the fact that the current administration has kind of pulled back on that, those efforts, they're not as aggressive. Then for the stormwater, we want to make sure we have systems in place to track all the data and activities related to the compliance with the minimum, minimum control measures for the stormwater permit, those, those are the measures that were required, as a group, we tried, we're required to meet, when I say group, I mean all the other entities under the permit. Emergency Response Unit, we want to make sure we have systems in place to track all the inspections for the FSCs, and any follow-up inspections as well as the work orders and overflows, for work orders for overflows, and discharge, other types of work orders, we want to make some systems to track all that data. Now, slide seven, now for the stormwater unit, we wanted to ensure that, just as, as I mentioned, we are the coordinating authority and co-permittee, we want to make sure that we're adequately monitored and implemented the six MCMs, the minimum control measures as required by the permit. Now, one of those, for MCM five, one of the requirements is that we inspect what they call BMP assets, those are best management practice assets, and what that stands for. Those should be, the goal is to inspect us every 36 months, but the minimum is every, every six to months. Now, what those assets are, example would be rain garden, permeable, pavement, detention basin, basically stormwater assets, you know, green infrastructure, so we do inspect those. Also want to make sure the reports are accurately prepared and supported, there is an annual report that is put together by the Stormwater Unit, it details the, the progress on the MCMs, it's, it's a pretty large report. Now, for the Emergency Response Unit, we want to make sure the district's fog plan, fog program is designed and operates in a manner that meets the requirements, the consent decree, there is a small section in the consent decree that addresses fossil oil and grease, so we have, we have a program plan that lines up with those requirements. Also want to make sure that procedures performed, DEC investigations are adequate, adequate and performed timely. So, move on to slide eight, so as far as approach methodology, we did a lot of discussions with, with the staff, a lot of teams meetings, they were very helpful, very knowledgeable, there's a lot of technical information that we had to learn. Thankful this was not the first time we've done this audit, so it was a little better the second time. In addition, so one of the first things we did as part of this process, we attained an understanding, and get a good handle of what the various environmental regulations are, what's out there, basically. As I mentioned, so there's, there's about 43 regulatory permits that, that are, that address the treatment plants and the maintenance yards, then you have the MS4 stormwater permit, then you have the portion of the consent decree that addresses fog, and then you have our district fog control program that was written in response to the consent decree section. We also reviewed the stormwater management plan, which is a plan that is developed and is required by the stormwater permit, it basically outline, it outlines the steps that MSD and the various participants of the, under the permit would take to meet those six minimum control measures. We obtained access, I should say access, to the current environmental management system, systems utilized by DEC, we had access to all the systems, we used the system, we reviewed them, we used the system to test, do our testing. Those systems involve Maximo, they involve SharePoint, there's a regulatory, regulatory calendar that developed to track all these tasks. Now, as to actual testing, we tested the RAU's process to identify, track, open and completed tasks, including training, we actually took the permits and reconciled what's in the permits to, to what's in the system, make sure we're not missing anything. We reviewed for uncompleted tasks, we looked at the supporting documentation for completed tasks, we did have an issue there on regarding documentation for training, we'll talk about that when I get to the observations. Slide nine, we also reviewed the MS4 annual report, that's the annual report, that's the stormwater report, to ensure it was accurately prepared, and also sure of compliance with, with the, the six minimum control measures, and we did test the supporting documentation for that report. We also tested the inspections of the BMPs, make sure those inspections are occurring in a timely manner as required. We reconciled the district's fog control for, fog control frame with the requirements of the consent decree. And then we did, for the ERU, we did test the FSC inspection process, and looked at the inspections, the follow-up inspections as well, looked at the recent investigations, the other work orders for overflows and bypasses. So basically for that area, we were looking for timeliness, there are certain, you know, things had to occur within a certain timeframe, and also when there's, when they find certain things, or certain steps that needed to be taken, we make sure those steps were taken, you know, sometimes additional work orders need to be issued, it depends on what they find, so. Any questions on that? Page 10, overall assessment, now this went really well, they are very organized, they have some really good processes in place, we had satisfactory opinion, no significant issues were identified, we did identify two opportunities for improvement. The first item was regards to inspections of the food service establishments, and then the second item is in regards to regulatory training and the related supporting documentation. If you move to page or slide 11, so as I mentioned, the first item we had to do was inspections of the FSCs, so basically, what's required for the FSCs, I guess I should mention, there's about 4,700 FSCs in our district, there's a lot of restaurants they have to deal with. They are required to be inspected at least once every five years, and if they fail an inspection, or get an NOB, a notice of violation, there has to be a reinspection within 60 days. Those are two time, the time, you know, time sensitive requirements. And what we noted, for the routine expect, inspections, for three of the 56 we looked at, that those inspections did not incur, did not occur within that, that five-year timeframe. Now, for the re-inspections, we looked at 45, and three of the 45 did not occur within that 60-day window. To move on to page 12, or slide 12, I should say, now, look at the bottom, as we got towards the end of this, what we found out, the reason that this happened, in, in large part was the result of not transitioning workload over, basically when the inspectors left, a new inspector came onboard, the workload was not transitioned or allocated to the new inspector, or to the rest of the staff properly, basically those FSCs kind of fell through the cracks when that process occurred. So, management is taking steps to improve that transitioning process, making sure that workload is transitioned, you know, transitioned properly, and they're also, they're adding some reports for monitoring, to make sure none of those fall through the cracks. Any questions? Okay, the second item is the regulatory training and supporting documentation. Now, the, many of the permits have training requirements in, in them, okay, you know, excuse me, so personnel that operate in certain roles, and perform certain job dues are required to receive certain regulatory training every so often, it depends on the type of training. And we did, when we did our testing, we know, we, we noted for, we tested 15 different employees, we looked at one course per employee, we could not obtain, excuse me, evidence of they're actually participating in the training. And then the second item is evidence that training was provided, we looked at five courses, for one of the five, we could not obtain evidence that the, the training actually occurred. From speaking with management, it seems like it did occur, and we think the personnel did take the training, but there needs to be evidence of that, that it occurred. To move on to page or slide 14, now during the scope period, this training was basically done manually, so it was in person, or, you know, they used a signing sheet and so forth, and was tracked manually. Now, since that time, they have moved the whole training program over to a digital platform, that is the, the learning district, we have talked about that in other audits, and so I think that's going to solve the issue, and so our recommendation is just to continue that process and further leverage the learning district, and most of our areas here are now using a learning district for most of the training, it's a great way to do it, the guys can do it online, everything's self-contained, the, the evidence of the training being presented and actually, you know, being taken is in the system, so it's, it's a great way to do it. So, are there any questions on that?
I've, I've got a question, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, sir.
This is Jim Singer.
Yes.
Is there, when, when a, when a restaurant opens for business for the first time and gets whatever licenses and inspections that it needs in St. Louis City and County, is there some system in place to determine that the grease disposal, well, that the sewage systems are in compliance with MSD standards?
I'll let Jay, I think the answer's yes, but I'm gonna let Jay answer that.
The short answer is yes, there is a system involved, we do a couple things, first is that on a regular basis, typically annually, we query the records of the health departments for their records with regard to these food service establishments, they also, these facilities before they're allowed to get their building permits are required to show that they have the grease traps in part of their plumbing code, and those plumbing code referrals come to us as well.
So, they, when, when you find an infraction on an inspection, this is something that has occurred since the license has been issued, and?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, with no other questions then, I think that concludes the meeting, the next meeting is tentatively scheduled for January 5, 2021, and can I get a motion to Jordan?
So moved.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take just a minute to swap out paperwork, and then we'll start the program management meeting. and then we'll start the program management meeting. You can go ahead and start the program management meeting.
Thank you. I will open the two-hundred-twelfth meeting of the program management committee. Start off with a roll call, please.
All right, we'll note that all trustees are present.
Next item, I'd ask the trustees to review the minutes of the October twenty-seventh meeting. And could I get a motion to approve?
So move.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Next item is the engineering department agenda items.
Good morning, trustees. Welcome to December. Quite a large agenda today. We've got a lot of construction projects and a number of engineering design projects and a few things in between. So we'll get started with the agenda. First item is the Bissell Coal Water Missouri Meramec Public I and I Reduction Contract B. Appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter a construction contract. The work to be done consists of rehabilitation approximately seventy thousand lineal feet of sanitary sewers eight to thirty-inch in diameter using cured-and-place pipe method. Rehabilitation of thirty-seven manholes and thirteen hundred service connections and making twenty-point repairs. The purpose of this project is to reduce inflow and infiltration in the Mailing Creek watershed. The district received two bids for this particular project. Our low bid was from Insituform Technologies USA. The bid was below our design estimate, and our appropriation of three-point-seven million dollars is slightly over the budget for the project. As far as MWBE participation, this is a requirement of ten percent minority, ten percent women, because we fund these CIPP projects through state of Missouri revolving loans. Insituform is committed to just over twenty percent MWBE, which meets the goals of the program. So I see our screen went out here, so I'll hold off before we go to the next one. It's not on here, Jim, for some reason.
All right, bear with us just a minute.
That reminds me, on these computers and the pads, you notice in NFL games, they use some pads on the sideline?
Mm-hmm.
They just throw them around and everything, and then pick them up, I guess. That never goes wrong with them, I guess.
Indestructible ones, I think. I just have to switch the paper.
I think they can still see it. It's just not showing up here.
But the trustees can still see it. I know in here, most of us have paper copies, so we might just have to use that.
So Jim, Amy, Mike, you guys can still see the agenda as I go through it?
Yeah, I think we lost.
Oh, okay.
Karen, do you have audio of the trustees from your laptop?
Go get me some breath.
All right, we're having some technical difficulties, so if anybody needs it, oh, here we go. I was gonna let everyone have a bathroom break, but stay put, please.
So Jim, Michael, Amy, you guys can hear everything now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I'll proceed with the second item. The second item is the Bissell Point Treatment Plant Trickleling Filter Media Replacement Project. This action appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter into a construction contract. The work to be done consists of removal and replacement of corrugated PVC sheet media and additional components for the six trickleling filters at the Bissell Treatment Plant. The purpose of the project is to extend the useful life of the trickleling filters to maintain the current level of service for the treatment and meet our permit requirements. The district received five bids on this project. Our low bid was from Goodwin Brothers Construction. Our bid was below the design estimate. The two-year appropriation of twenty-five million dollars, fourteen million in this fiscal year is below the original budget for the project, which was thirty million, five-hundred thousand. The MWBE requirement for the project was seventeen percent African-American participation, and Goodwin Brothers met that requirement with approximately seventeen-point-eight-eight percent participation on the project. There will be a future supplemental appropriation in fiscal year twenty-two. Again, bring our total appropriation to twenty-five million dollars. The next two items are our volume reduction green infrastructure grant program, grants. The first one is for Union Station Theater Parking Project. Ordinance authorized the district to enter into agreement with Eighteenth Street LLC to provide financial assistance through the green infrastructure grant program. The purpose of the project is to reduce combined sewer overflows to the Mississippi River per the long-term control plan and the consent decree. The project will reduce volume with the installation of Permianville pavement, pavers. The total cost of this project is a hundred-and-sixty thousand, and the Eighteenth Street LLC is requesting approximately a hundred-and-eighteen thousand, eight-hundred reimbursement for the project. Obviously, the location of the project, there's a map in your packet. It's at Union Station, towards the rear of the Union Station, is the Union Station Theater. And they're marked on the display, shows a dark green area where the Permianville pavement. So they had a pavement replacement project, and they're going to replace that with Permianville pavements, which will reduce the runoff to the combined sewer in that area. The next item is at the Wilkinson School Apartment Project. Again, authorize the district to enter an agreement with Seventy-two Twelve Arsenal LLC to provide a green infrastructure grant. The purpose of this project is to reduce combined sewer overflows to the River to Pear as part of the long-term control plan and consent decree. The project will reduce volume by reducing the overall impervious surface area as part of the redevelopment. The total cost of the project is estimated at a hundred-and-six thousand dollars, and they're requesting fifty-two thousand, two-hundred. So basically, on this project, the site was totally paved. They're going ahead and removing some of the existing paved areas, and they'll be, and those areas will be marked on a plat to prevent them from paving those over in the future. So that allows that surface water that originally ran off in those areas to soak into the ground and reduce, again, to reduce the flow to the combined sewer system of River to Pear. Any questions on those two CSO grants? All right, the next item is a construction project, the Dacey Branch Sanitary Relief Project. This action appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter a construction contract. The work to be done consists of construction approximately two-hundred-and-eighty feet of sanitary sewers at twelve inches in diameter. The purpose of the project is to relieve overcharged sanitary sewers in the Dacey Branch. The district received five bids on this project. The low bid we received was from Above and Below Contracting LLC. The bid was below our design estimate and our appropriation of three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, which includes sixty-one thousand for utility relocation and contingencies below our budget for the project. The, this is slightly, quite a bit below the budget of six-hundred-and-five thousand. There was an out-ofneed for additional dewatering costs and amount of bank stabilization on a creek crossing that was part of the project. So we had quite a bit of savings on our budget on that project. Above and Below Contracting is committed to just over seventeen percent minority participation on the project, which meets the seventeen percent goal for the project. Next item is the Missouri River Treatment Plant Water Service Piping Replacement Project. Appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter a construction contract. The work consists of removal and replacement of approximately twelve-hundred feet of service water piping, six-inch and eight-inch diameter. The purpose of this project is to replace corroded sections of service water piping within the tunnels between treatment processes at the plant. They were leaking and needed, were in need of repair. We actually received three bids on the project. Only one of those bidders was deemed to be responsive. The two other bidders on the project, one did not meet the seventeen percent MBE requirement. The other failed to respond to our questions regarding the MWBE. But those were both the second and third low bidders. Corrigan Company was the low bid on the project. The bid was below our designer's estimate, and our appropriation was below the budget for the project. Corrigan Company did meet our MBE requirement, just slightly over seventeen percent African-American participation on the project. The next item is the, the next item is Watkins Creek Pump Station Forest Main Replacement. This action appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter into a construction contract. The work consists of construction approximately eighty-three hundred lineal feet of sanitary forest main twenty inches in diameter, a thousand feet of pipe and tunnel and appurtenances. The purpose of this project is to replace the existing forest main, which has extensive damage caused by hydrogen sulfide and air pockets in the forest main. The district received five bids for this project. Our low bid was from Cole Grading Incorporated. The bid's below our design estimate. There was a two-year appropriation for the project of five-point-six million. Will be appropriating four million in this initial fiscal year and is below the two-year planned budget of seven-point-five million for the project. Cole Grading is committed to eighteen-point-three-four percent MBE African-American participation, which meets the seventeen percent goal for the project. The next project is the Woods Mill Sanitary Relief Project. This action appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter a construction contract. The work to be done consists of construction approximately twenty-one hundred lineal feet of sanitary sewers eight to fifteen inch in diameter. The purpose of this project is to reduce building backups and alleviate overcharged sanitary sewers in the Woods Mill sanitary area. The district received six bids for this particular project. Our low bid was from Pace Construction Company. The bid was below our design estimate, and our appropriation of one-point-two million dollars is below the budget for the project. Pace Construction has agreed to provide approximately thirty-three percent MBE participation on the project, again, which meets the seventeen percent goal for the project. Then another construction project, the New England Town Quarry Pump Station Improvement Project. This item appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter a construction contract. The work consists of construction of a new duplex submersible pump station, approximately eleven hundred feet of twelve-inch diameter forest main, and approximately twenty-two hundred lineal feet of six-to-eighteen-inch diameter gravity sewers, and of course, the demolition of the existing pump station. The purpose of this project is to replace the sanitary sewer pump station of forest main that had inadequate capacity and had reached the end of their useful life cycle. The district received six bids on this particular project. The low bid was from Fred M. Luth and Sons. The bid was below our designer's estimate. Our appropriation of three-point-three-million-three-hundred-fifty thousand, which includes approximately five-hundred thousand for electrical utility costs, is below the budget of three-point-five million proposed in the fiscal year budget. Fred M. Luth is committed to just over seventeen percent MBE participation, which meets the seventeen percent goal for the project. The next item is the Rayford Court Storm Sewer Separation Project. This action appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter a construction contract. The work consists of the construction of approximately three-hundred-and-fifty-five feet of storm sewers eighteen inches in diameter. The purpose of the project is to alleviate structure flooding and building backups in the nine-hundred block of Rayford Court in the city of Balfountain Neighbors. The district received seven bids for this work. The low bid was from Gershenson Construction Company. The bid was below our design estimate, and our appropriation of a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand is equal to the project budget. Gershenson is committed to seventeen percent African-American minority participation, which meets the seventeen percent goal for the project. That's it for our construction projects. The next five items are all very similar, so I'm gonna kind of give a little briefing ahead of time. You don't have, I've got some information for myself. You don't have that in front of you, but I wanted to give you a little background with regard to these appropriations planned. As you recall, prior to two thousand and sixteen, the district funded stormwater, both operation and maintenance and capital improvement through the existence of twelve taxing sub-districts, basically located inside of two-seventy and outside the city of St. Louis. That was really our only funding to deal with stormwater throughout our entire district service area. In two thousand and sixteen, we went to the voters to put in a ten-cent stormwater tax to deal with the operation and maintenance of our stormwater system throughout the district. So the entire district would be taxed for operation and maintenance. And as part of that, turning that tax on and getting approval of voters, the district agreed to turn these, what we call OMCI taxing districts, we turned those off, back to zero, with the possibility at some future date, we could turn them back on if necessary. So for two years, we were taxing for operation and maintenance, but did not have a funding source for capital improvements. So in two thousand and nineteen, if you recall, we went back to the voters with the approval of the board and the rate commission for an impervious area rate to fund capital improvements throughout the district. In April of two thousand and nineteen, that proposition failed. And again, the district was left without, without funding mechanism for stormwater improvements. The goal then in two thousand and twenty was to go back out and talk to folks about what they really wanted to do since that motion had failed. But in the meantime... But in the meantime, uh, in late two thousand nineteen, uh, we were being asked by municipalities, would you guys consider turning the OMCI's back on? So there could be, at least be capital improvement work going on within the OMCI districts. So my staff, along with the executive director, Brian Holsher, Public Affairs, we went out and, and visited over sixty municipalities, talking to them about stormwater and what their interest was. And there was, uh, gauged the interest in the twelve OMCI taxing districts about turning those back on. We had favorable, uh, support in six of those twelve taxing sub-districts to turn those back on and start collecting in them again. But one of the, uh, things that came, became evident as we were talking with the municipalities is that they, they would like to, uh, address some issues themselves that they have priority on. So the district felt like it would be appropriate to then take the monies collected from the OMCI and create a grant program. So fifty percent of the money raised within that OMCI or the municipalities, the municipalities then could apply for a grant to use that money. So they could address priority issues. At the same time, the district would be able to continue to do our program in those areas and take care of our priority projects. We brought to that, to the board, uh, and the board, as part of our budget process for fiscal year two thousand twenty, which is the year we're in now. So those OMCI tax rates at the, uh, about a year ago were turned back on. Uh, and we started, and we will collect money in those, starting in January of two thousand twenty-one. So what I'm here today to do is, uh, the portion of the dollars that we're going to allocate from the revenues collected, uh, from the tax revenue will be, uh, made available then to municipalities for grants. So over the past year, uh, with a little bit of struggle talking to municipalities, uh, during the pandemic, uh, you know, we, we got ahold of, uh, close to sixty municipalities to see if they had an interest in participating in the grant program. Uh, not all of them are, uh, as you'll see when I go through the results and the amount of money we're appropriating. But that's what this is. So basically, we're appropriating the dollars for the grant program. It'll be very similar to what we do with the CSO grants. When a municipality requests a grant from this, uh, we will have appropriated the dollars, which we're doing today. Uh, and then the specific project we'll bring to you, very similar to what we do with the green infrastructure grants. The one caveat is that, uh, we're also requesting from the board that if that request is for under fifty thousand dollars, which is the size of our small grant program, which are projects we do internally, uh, the, and, and with the cities and the amount of effort required, pulling those pro, those really small projects together, because they could be requesting just hundreds of dollars to do something small. Uh, we felt like that might be onerous to bring each and every one of those back. So we're requesting permission that if the grant is for under fifty thousand dollars, that staff be go ahead and allowed to be make that. So there's two things we're asking for within these OMCI's. Is your permission to issue grants under fifty thousand dollars? And also to appropriate the funding in each one of those sub-districts, uh, today that, uh, have the grant program.
Rich, can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
So I, I understand, I'm getting feedback, but anyway. I, I, I understand that MSD has this, uh, ranking system of prioritizing projects. Uh, and so, um, this is an old, th, this, this grant program takes money out of the MSD ranking system and, uh, and to some extent lets the, the municipalities redirect that money. And so, yeah, I, I guess, you know, should we be looking at, um, the difference between how MSD would spend the money under your ranking, under this established ranking system and what, and how the money's actually being spent and what the difference is? Uh, I,
Yeah, there, there is criteria for the grant. In other words, uh, I don't, I don't have all the specifics and I, I, and I could offer to provide this, the very specifics on what is grant eligible. Uh, but what we're really trying to do, there are small, uh, uh, projects within a municipality that actually are true stormwater projects. But because we lack funding and, and it really doesn't have a huge impact, if you look at things from either within the OMCI or even district-wide, that project, Jim, in, in reality, is probably never, ever gonna get done. Uh, but this allows that municipality to help, uh, make that issue go away. Uh, where the district, if, if we were required them to stay to our priority system, one, there really wouldn't be a need for the grant program, uh, because we would, we would have the, the final say-so on all the projects within the area. And then they're gonna tell us, well, then you might as well administer it. Uh, but, uh, you know, there, it, it has to resolve a stormwater issue. In other words, they, they will ask us, uh, what, uh, they're gonna tell us what they're spending that money for. And if we don't feel like it's addressing a legitimate stormwater issue within their municipality, uh, we won't issue that grant. I know that doesn't totally give you, uh, the comfort level I think you're looking for. But when we met with the municipalities, you know, their biggest issue was, is that MSD, you get to make all the calls. Uh, what we feel might be a legitimate stormwater is, issue may not be to you. Uh, uh, so that's kinda the, the feedback we got from them.
And, and, and did you make some kind of commitment about how much of the money would be spent under the grant program?
We did at the time. Basically, whatever the OMCI generates on an annual basis, we're making fifty percent of those dollars available, uh, to the municipalities based on the amount of money generated in, in the OMCI area. Take, for example, and I'll go through this. The Deer Creek probably has, uh, eighteen municipalities, so, uh, they all get a proportion of that dollars that their municipality generates based on the tax revenue within that area. And some of the dollars are pretty small. Some municipalities might only be getting less than a thousand dollars. But then they, they might be doing a street projects where they're building storm sewers, uh, for the project, which really benefit us as far as stormwater, because we're not able to build storm sewers in an area. Then they could put that less than a thousand dollars towards that storm sewer. So, uh, those are the types of things we're looking at. Uh, we will not allow them to use on, uh, if you recall from the audit, uh, we talked about the MS four program, which is stormwater quality permit that we have. There are requirements that cities have to do for that program, such as street sweeping, uh, taking care, you know, minimizing salt. They cannot take these grant dollars towards that. In other words, they would, it, it has to be towards resolving either a flooding or erosion issue.
And it, it like, if, if Ladue and Creve Court are in the same OMCI, Ladue could only get half of what, uh, their rate payers, their OMCI payers have paid in for the grant program. They, they couldn't spend Creve Court's money, so to speak.
No, that, that is exactly correct. And the dollars that the municipalities do not use then goes back into the district's fifty percent or fifty-plus. And the district goes ahead and performs the highest priority projects that it has on, on file for that particular, uh, OMCI district.
So, so do you think that the board or, I mean, is there a need to, to sort of monitor this on a, sort of a global basis? Just to get some sense that, like, I know you say it's gotta be used for stormwater purposes.
We'll be, we'll be, actually, like I said, if it's a project or if, if, if they're requesting over fifty thousand dollars, and again, we set that fifty thousand dollars and we base it on our small repair contract, because those small repairs under fifty thousand, right now, I don't bring to you on a monthly basis. Uh, we, we utilize our infrastructure repair dollars. We get three bids and we do that work. Uh, but if it's a grant that they're requesting for a project that they're performing and it's over fifty thousand dollars, uh, I'll bring that to you, just like I do the CSO grant, say, the city of Creve Court, uh, is requesting fifty thou, fifty-one thousand dollars for a project that they're spending a hundred thousand dollars on. In other words, they, they might not use all grant money on a project. They might use some of their own money. So those, so you'll see those individually come and you'll probably start seeing those right away, uh, in February. So, uh, that will give you a sense, uh, of, uh, of what types of projects that the municipalities are doing.
And, and do you think, think most of the grants are gonna be, most of the money is gonna be spent in grants under fifty thousand?
I would suspect if, once we start going through, Jim, you'll see in, in most municipalities, the dollars available, with the exception of the large municipalities like Ladue, Kirkwood, are going to be, uh, I mean, the, the amount of money available is, is, uh, less than fifty thousand dollars.
And would it be a big deal, uh, for the engineering or whoever's approving this to maybe once to twice a year? Give us a little report on, uh, the projects that you've approved?
I could fully commit to that, Jim. Uh, I think, yeah, we're, we're gonna be tracking it by municipality, by each individual watershed. So we would be able to provide you at least twice a year, uh, a listing of all the grants awarded and the, and the amount of dollars and, and the issue it resolved. Uh, I can commit to that. Uh, probably it'd be the easiest is what I'll do is, because we'll be coming to you each year to appropriate the dollars. That would be the time that I would at least give one. And then, uh, since we're just starting it, uh, sometime in the middle of next year, uh, once, uh, the program's up and running, uh, I can give a, a mid-year review as well.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions before I kinda go through the appropriations and the amount of money we're allocating? Okay, a lot of information there. So, all right, the, the first one is the Coldwater Creek OMCI, uh, reimbursements program. Again, appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter into intergovernmental agreements under fifty thousand, not involving MSD infrastructure improvements with municipalities where revenue is collected by the Coldwater Creek OMCI in St. Louis County. This ordinance appropriates funds and authorize, uh, district to enter into agreements under fifty thousand, uh, not involving MSD infrastructure where municipalities, again, I'm sorry, I'm repeating what I just said. Inter-governmental agreements fifty thousand or greater will be individually submitted to the board for approval. And again, I'm agreeing to provide a report of the grants, uh, twice a year. The Coldwater Creek reimbursement program allocates approximately one-half of the OMCI taxes generated in each municipality back to the municipality for eligible stormwater expenditures. Eligible stormwater expenditures may include the following: storm sewer and inlet construction, streambank stabilization, erosion projects, stormwater planning or engineering costs, cleaning of creeks or detention basins or other stormwater-related expenses as determined appropriate by the district. Activities for the, required by their MS four permit compliance and routine maintenance are not considered eligible for grants. One of the things that we have heard from the municipalities is a lot of the smaller ones don't really have a plan for stormwater. In other words, the larger municipalities performed, uh, large studies of where the problems are and then they prioritize the projects similar to the way we do and hand it, and then we can put those into our systems. The smaller municipalities don't have the money. So we have heard that a number of them are gonna use that to kinda understand where their problems are. And if it's a large enough project that they can't deal with, they'll turn it back to us and we'll try to get it into our system. So that, that's a good thing right there. Uh, on the Coldwater, the municipalities, uh, that are part of the Coldwater Grant Program, there were a total of sixteen municipalities, uh, within the Coldwater Watershed. Uh, they're listed on the board write-up. I'm not gonna go through them individually. There were a total of twelve that agreed to, they were gonna be requesting grant dollars. Uh, so we're not appropriating the full amount of revenue that we anticipate. We're, we're appropriating seven-hundred-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars for the twelve municipalities listed. Uh, we had originally budgeted a total of nine-hundred-ninety-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-four. The, of the dollars that, that were budgeted, that weren't removed, that weren't used part of the grant, we'll go back and the district will be able to perform a project, uh, with those dollars and with our fifty percent. Moving on, the next OMCI is the Deer Creek OMCI reimbursement. Again, appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter into the intergovernmental agreements with the municipalities in the Deer Creek Watershed. Uh, the municipalities of the, of, within the OMCI, there were a total of twenty-one municipalities within the Deer Creek Watershed. Eighteen of the municipalities have agreed, uh, to, to participate in the grant program, uh, to the dollars shown. There'll be a total appropriation of one-million-five-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars uh, from those taxes and available to the municipalities. Uh, the original budget was one-million-nine-hundred-twenty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. The next, uh, OMCI is the Seminary, uh, OMCI reimbursement program. Appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter into intergovernmental agreements, uh, for revenues collected in the seminary branch of River to Pear in St. Louis County. The municipalities, proportion of the OMCI revenue allocated is available for grants. There are a total of three munivit, municipalities, I'm sorry, there's four total municipalities uh, in St. Louis County in the seminary district. Three of those municipalities, uh, have requested to participate. Our appropriation will be sixty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-ten dollars and, uh, our budget was originally one-hundred-twenty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. The next one is the Sugar Creek OMCI. Again, appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter into agreements for under fifty thousand dollars. Uh, revenues collected in the Sugar Creek OMCI District, which is located in St. Louis County. There are two municipalities located in the Sugar Creek area. It's the city of DePere and the city of Kirkwood. Both of them, uh, are participating in the grant program. We are appropriating a hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-five dollars. Original projection for, for the funding was a hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. Then the last OMCI, uh, was the University City OMCI reimbursement program. Appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter an agreement, uh, for funds collected in the University City OMCI in St. Louis County. There were thirteen, uh, municipalities, uh, including St. Louis County within this OMCI for University City. Nine of the municipalities, uh, have agreed to participate in the grant program. Our total appropriation for the University City OMCI is three-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. Uh, original budget of funding for grants was four-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. As you recall, the district returned, turned on six of the OMCI's, uh, of the twelve, uh, based on input from the municipalities. The sixth one was the Maylene Creek Watershed, which consists of a number of municipalities in North County. Uh, one, we did not have interest in those areas for our grant program. So the, the doc, that OMCI was turned back on and the district will utilize those dollars to perform district projects in the Maylene Watershed. Are there any questions regarding the OMCI appropriations? All right, we'll move on to other items. The next item is the Stormwater Quality Green Infrastructure. It is a small grant rain scrape, uh, rainscaping program. Infrastructure. It is a small grant rainscaping program. This ordinance appropriates $200,000 and offers authorized staff to amend an existing inter-agency agreement with the Missouri Botanical Garden for the purpose of, to improve water, area water quality by preventing harmful pollutants from entering the stormwater system through runoff into local water bodies. The purpose of this, this is a small grant program located primarily in St. Louis County. It's a project part of our MS4 program. It's a program to encourage individual landowners to implement green infrastructure or rainscaping techniques on their individual properties to address water quality in the stormwater runoff. As you recall, we have a similar small grant program located in the Mississippi River watershed, which we appropriate for, and the River De Pair watershed, which are both consent decree requirement. This is not part of the consent decree. These grants will be issued in the St. Louis County area where we have the separate sewer system, but it's part of our MS4, our stormwater permit that we've talked about earlier. Maximize the effectiveness, the stormwater grant program in the education of the rainscaping garden development. We use the Missouri Botanical Garden to help pull that program together. Of the 200,000 appropriated for the grant program, 55,000 is used for Missouri Botanical Garden to implement that program. Just some items at the grant, Missouri Botanical Garden, if they didn't do this for us, I would have to have additional staff to perform this work. They promote the small grant program, both for this program and one, ones for the consent decree. They update our grant documents. They coordinate with our public information to get the word out on the small grants. They coordinate and conduct workshops on small grants throughout the district. They track the applications. They do the site visits and they've actually verified that and follow-through that the work is completed before people receive their grants. And they also follow up these homeowners when they need assistance for learning how to maintain and keep the rain gardens in place. This is the second year of the program. It's proven very successful. Generally, we have more requests for grants than we have dollars available. So that tells you, kind of measures the success of the program. Are there any questions? All right, the next, excuse me. The next three items are requests for staff to proceed with condemnation efforts on three sanitary relief projects located in St. Louis County, where we've been unable to obtain all the easements for the projects. All three involve constructed sanitary sewer overflows that we are required to remove by the consent decree deadlines by 2023. So in order to keep these projects moving, the district's requesting they allow us to proceed to condemnations. Again, the ordinance authorized staff, the first one is Canterbury and Rowland Sanitary Relief. Ordinance authorized staff to proceed with condemnation efforts, including the filing of all necessary court pleadings and documents leading to the acquisition of permanent easements and temporary construction easements on two parcels remaining on the project located in the city of North Woods and Pasadena Hills. The easements are needed to construct approximately 2,600 feet of 8 to 18-inch diameter sewers and several other bank improvements that will be needed because the sewer is located adjacent to a creek. The purpose of the project is alleviate wet weather building backups and overcharged sanitary sewers, and again, to provide for elimination of one constructed overflow required by the consent decree. The district, I mean, the project required 20 easements initially. We've gotten 18 of those. So we're just down to these final two. We continue to negotiate with the property owners. You have a drawing up there that shows the two remaining. Parcel 20, which is located on the map there to the right. What we're doing on that one, we simply, there's been a recent change in ownership and we can't, the existing owner isn't going to sign it. So we're just waiting for the property transfer. My understanding is that the new owner is going to sign the easement. But just to keep it going, in case he has a change of heart, we're going to ask to proceed to condemnation. The other one is parcel 23, which is to the left on your document. Again, you can see quite a bit of that person's property is going to be impacted. This particular person, we are just, they failed to respond to all of our outreaches. And as you can see, it's, you don't know it, but it's owned by a management services. So not uncommon when something's more than likely rental property. The homeowners getting a hold of the landlord sometimes can be difficult by allowing us to go to condemnation. Typically, we can get a hold of that management company to get the project moving forward. Any questions on that particular project? The next item is the Subtrunk Number Two Sanitary Relief. This ordinance authorized staff to proceed with further condemnation efforts. On six parcels of ground, this project's located in unincorporated North County. The easements and temporary construction easements are needed to construct 4,400 feet of 18-inch diameter sewer. The purpose of the project is to leave wet weather building backups and to provide for the elimination of three constructed overflows. So it's a significant project of size, almost a mile long, and three overflows. We need to keep the project moving. There were 21 easements on this project. We've got 15 so far, which leaves six that we're still working on. We're trying to work with property owners. We've got the drawing up there for you, and let me get my papers here and I'll kind of go through them. Parcel seven and parcel 12, which are on your first map here. It looks like we're, we've been negotiating with the property owner. They're requesting, looks like almost double what we're asking. So we're negotiating with the property owner. There is a good possibility we could go to condemnation because we just can't reach agreement with that property owner. Parcel 12, again, it's a project we, we've just been unable, we're not getting return calls from the property owner. And by allowing us to go, then it gets the process moving and lets the homeowner know that we really need to have the easement. Moving on, parcel 18. We've been discussing this for many, many times with this property owner. It turns out, not uncommon when we're getting easements, the homeowner's had some billing issues. So we're trying to make sure we understand what those billing issues are. And I think once those are resolved, then generally we're able to get the easement worked out. Parcel 19, which is a large, long, lengthy easement through common ground on this subdivision, which is sometimes hard. It's a Parkmont Homeowners Association. We're having difficulty getting a hold of the actual trustees on the project. A lot of times in here, all you have is a, is a post office box. So long easements, we, we're not sure whether we'll go to condemnation. In most cases, we're able to work things out with trustees on a subdivision. Parcel 20. Again, we've got a owner name that appears to be rental property, our large entity. We have met with the property owner, are returning for a call. We've made an offer. They're not, they have not given a counteroffer. So we do anticipate going to condemnation on that one. Parcel 21. Again, rental property, a smaller easement. We've made an offer and we do not, we are not hearing from the homeowner. So a lot of the properties on this particular one, we're just, we're just not getting response from the homeowners, allowing us to go, to at least proceed to condemnation, generally gets response from the property owners. Any questions on that one? Next item is Subtrunk Number Three Sanitary Relief. Not to be confused with Subtrunk Number Two, but in the same area of North St. Louis County. Again, authorized, allowing us to proceed with further condemnations. This project here also has six easements that we've been unable to obtain. Again, a fairly large project, 4,300 feet of 8 to 27-inch sanitary sewers, alleviates wet weather and building backups, and it provides for the elimination of one constructed sanitary sewer overflow for the project. The project required 24 easements at the start. We've been able to acquire 18 of those easements, which leaves the remaining six. We continue to negotiate with homeowners, but we're asking to request. So parcel number three located there, the homeowner's not responded, but we have received a call from an attorney. It's a fairly small easement that we're getting from this particular property, but can't get the homeowner to respond. Parcel number four, that one, we've actually reached an agreement. The family's dealing with an illness. We think we'll be able to, we'll actually have that easement before we have to proceed to condemnation, but we're including it in case something happens with that particular property owner. Parcel eight, again, a fairly small easements to the back of these properties. The homeowner in this case, not unlike the billing issue, had a bad experience where the district had made a repair on a cave-in or in his yard or had a problem. So he's trying to use that as leverage and he's just afraid. So we got to give him some assurances that we'll make sure we take care of all the issues the next time around. But it looks like we'll get that easement signed. Parcel number 11, again, towards the back of the property. We've kind of agreed verbally, but the homeowner is seeking some advice through an attorney before they sign the easements. But we expect to have that easement, but again, requesting condemnation. Parcel number 17, this property owner is, we are talking with him. So we have, he has provided, he's agreed to provide a counteroffer, a very small easement, but we do not anticipate condemnation. And then finally, parcel 20. This is simply a property owner that has not responded. Our understanding is that potentially a property owner works out of town. So we're just trying to coordinate some communication. And obviously, a lot of our easements are by knocking on the door, talking to people. In the current pandemic, we're using, exhausting all of our efforts trying to do, communicate through phones and computers and things like that. So it has made, getting those easements difficult. So our guys are working hard out there to get these. But if we felt like we could get them, but we feel like we need to move forward just to ensure these projects get complete. Are there any questions on the easement condemnations? All right, last group of projects are all projects for fiscal year 21. They're new design projects. We've negotiated with the consultants, selected the consultants. We'll be moving on design of these projects that I'm going to go through. And then in future years, we'll be constructing these projects that we're designing. The first item is Abyssal Point Fine Screen and Gate Improvement Project. It authorized staff to enter into a design, appropriates funds and authorized staff to enter a design contract. This ordinance authorized the district to enter a contract with Jacobs Engineering Group for the design of the abyssal fine screens and gate improvements. The design will be for the preparation and construction documents to construct the removal and replacement of common unit sluice gates and various gates throughout the pre-aeration tanks at the abyssal wastewater treatment plant. The purpose of the project, again, is to replace those that have reached the end of their useful life. One of the things on this particular one is we have a larger project coming up and the replacement of these fine screens will enhance how that project takes place. The cost estimate for this particular project is $28,600,000 and is scheduled to begin construction in fiscal year 23. The district considered two proposals for this project. And the appropriation for $2,844,000 for design services is $580,000 below the budget that we had in the CRP. The appropriation includes funding for design services for contingencies and then services during the construction of the contract. Jacobs Engineering has committed to just over 31% MWB participation with two firms. And as you recall, through our diversity program, professional services, which includes these engineering design services, there's actually no goal for participation. The district does require that the, the design, lead design engineer subcontract 25%. We don't dictate who that goes to, but generally, we will see a large commitment from the engineering community to include MWBEs. Again, on this particular project, they're including just over 31%, which is a very good percentage participation for this project. Next item is a Cox Creek Pump Station Relocation. Appropriates funds and authorized staff to enter a design contract with Tuvinot Wade and Marcone for the design of the Cox Creek Pump Station B relocation project. This will be for the design and preparation and construction documents to construct a new triplex submersible pumping station at a new location in the Cox Creek watershed. The purpose of the project is to replace an inadequate pump station facility. There's no space for expansion or secondary storage at the current location. Due to the complexities of pump station site selection, we're doing this project design in two phases. This first phase, which we're appropriating for here, is a technical memorandum evaluating several pump station sites for future property acquisition, for access for maintenance and utility coordination to make sure we have cost-effective construction. The second phase, which will come hopefully next year, for design services, will, to complete the design, will be in fiscal year 22 and is, will be approximately just over, slightly over a million dollars. The construction cost estimate for this relocated pump station is approximately $8 million and is scheduled to be started in fiscal year 2023, which is two years from now. The district considered two other proposals for this project. The two other firms are listed on the board write-up. Our appropriation of $195,000 for the, basically the planning services, is $105,000 below our budget, proposed budget for the planning services in the CRP. TWM, which is Tuvinot Wade and Marcone, has committed to just over 25, 6% MWB participation. Again, there's no goal for these professional service. Any questions on that one?
How you pronounce that first name of that company?
Tuvinot, Tuvinot Wade and Marcone. That's why I say TWM. It's a lot easier than. The next item is the Coldwater Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant's Repair and Improvement Project. It appropriates funds and authorized staff to enter to a design contract with Donahue and Associates for the design of the Coldwater Creek repairs and improvement projects. It will be for the design and preparation of construction documents to construct the removal and replacement of all aeration control piping fittings within the aeration control building. The purpose of this project is to replace these systems where this equipment has reached the end of its useful life and is in need of repair. The district considered one other proposal on this project. Our appropriation of $943,000 for design services is slightly below our budget for the project. And Donahue and Associates has committed to 31, just over And Donahue and Associates has committed to thirty-one, just over thirty-one percent MWB participation on this project. The next item is the El Toro, El Tora Wet Weather Storage Facility. This action appropriates funds and authorized staff to enter into a design contract with KAI three sixty Construction Services for the engineering design service for thirty, thirty percent conceptual design build documents and support for the selection of the design builder for the wet weather storage project. The purpose of this project is to construct a wet weather storage facility to alleviate sanitary sewer surcharging and building backups during wet weather. KAI will also provide advisory services under future supplemental appropriation during the actual design and construction and the startup of the, of the actual tank facility. The district considered one other proposal for the project. Our appropriation of five hundred and seventy-six thousand for these design services is two hundred and twenty-four below the proposed budget funding in the CRP. KAI, which happens to be a minority-owned company, is providing additional minority participation, which will provide for almost forty-six percent MWB participation on this design build owner's rep project. The next item is the Gaslight Square Sewer Improvement Phase Two. This appropriates funds and authorized staff to enter into a pre-design contract with Stan Tech Consulting Services for the design of the Gaslight Square Improvements Phase Two. Gaslight Square Improvement Phase Two was established in order for a pre-designed study to be prepared as a city shed mitigation project. If you recall, city shed program, as far as the consent decree, is to alleviate overland flooding and basement backups in the combined sewer area of the, of the district, which is required as part of the consent decree. Again, the purpose of the project is to relieve that overland flooding. It's a very congested, really developed area, and we're getting this pre-designed study to try to find the most cost-effective solution to address this basement backups and flooding of the area. The district considered three other proposals for this project. Our appropriation of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the planning services is equal to that, to that proposed funding that we had in the budget. And Stan Tech has committed to twenty-five percent women participation. Again, there's no goal for minority or women participation for this particular project. The next item is the Lima Wastewater Treatment Facility Repair and Improvement, miscellaneous improvement project at the Lima Treatment Plant. Authorize, appropriates funds and authorized staff to enter a design contract with Donahue and Associates for the design of these repairs. We'll be preparing construction documents for the repair, removal, and replacement of various aging infrastructure components within the plant. The project includes replacement of a very, excuse me, buried electrical conduit serving the secondary clarifiers and basically repairing a lot of existing power and control conductors that have become not working properly throughout the plant. They will also be doing some concrete infrastructure repair within our tunnels between treatments that the concrete's been damaged due to leakage and seepage through the, through the years at the plant. The construction estimate for this project is seven million dollars. The district considered two other proposals for the project. The appropriation for nine hundred and ten thousand is just slightly ten thousand over the proposed funding for the project presented in the CRP. And Donahue has committed to just under thirty percent MWB participation on the project. Next item is the Pump Station Repair and Improvement Project Contract C. The district has a number of pump stations that each year identifies that have reached close to their end of their useful life. So we begin designing and construction to replace those pump stations. If you recall, we have over two hundred and fifty pump stations out there. So we're systematically going through those pump stations and doing these repairs. This is the third such contract. Again, authorized the appropriation of funds that authorized the district to enter a design contract with Crawfey, Murphy, and Tilly for these services. The, the project design and preparation, the construction documents for multiple pump station improvements. The contract consists of five pump stations for improvements. Again, the purpose of the project is to renew pump station assets that exceeded their life. The construction cost estimate for all five of these pump stations is three million, one hundred and forty thousand dollars. In the board write-up is a listing of those five pump stations, again, located throughout the district. The district considered two other proposals when we selected Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly. Our appropriation of eight hundred and ten thousand dollars is equal to what the district had budgeted for these design services. Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly has committed to just over thirty-four percent MWB participation for the project, and again, with no goal for the project. So that concludes the design projects. Before I go to the last item, is there any questions on those? All right, the last item is the, it's a renewal of a contract, the radar rainfall data project. This action appropriates additional funds and authorized staff to amend our contract and exercise the first of four option years with View and Associates, which is our vendor services for this particular project. This contract allows the district to continue maintaining the integration between our existing rain gauge network that the district has and NEXRAD radar data. This effort, project produces what we call GAR, or Gauge Adjusted Radar Rainfall, which is used by our district engineers for modeling and planning purposes. And it's also used by our consultants and then by our operation division, which is where you guys get to see it. When we have a large rain event, Brett comes in here, bakes a report, talks about where the heavy rain fell. We're able to produce a nice radar rainfall image that shows where the most intense areas were. It allows us to even dive down into neighborhoods, and we do the correlation with where we've received calls, allows us to address property owners. So it's really a very good service that, that the district has and is provided by this contract. Again, it allows us to estimate more accurately the amount of rain that falls within our boundaries that our myriad of, of rainfall gauges out there will not give us. So we have close to a hundred rainfall gauges out there. This data will allow us to extrapolate into like close to two thousand data points to look at our rainfall data. And again, it uses this gauge adjusted rainfall, rainfall data. Again, it helps us to address customer calls where ops reports back here to the district. Again, this is, this is the first year, it's a five-year contract. This is our first renewal year. Our appropriation of one hundred and fifty thousand for this work is equal to what we had in the budget. And that concludes the engineering construction items, Mr. Evans.
Thank you. If we could scroll back to the first page for the agenda, and I can close the meeting out.
Should be up there.
Thank you very much. So next item is any other business?
There's none.
Thank you. Next meeting scheduled for Tuesday, January fifth, 2021. Motion for adjournment?
Don't move.
Motion and second, meeting is closed, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Can you hear me, Amy?
I don't, I don't think she's there, Tim. Or she is coming back.
Okay, sorry.
See my North Carolina Tarrio?
I didn't watch.
We just got, just got ready.
Okay, welcome to the two hundred and sixty-first meeting of the Finance Committee of the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District. Can we get a roll call, please?
I will note that all trustees are present.
And can I get a motion for approval of the minutes from the October twenty-seventh meeting?
Don't move. Second.
Okay, minutes are approved. We next have the quarterly pension review.
All right. So we've got Peter from Aon, who you've heard from before, here to present quarterly results and talk through a few other things related to the pension plan. It's all yours, Peter.
All right, good, good morning. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving. Joining me today, before we get into the performance update, joining me today is my colleague Mike Comstock, who's going to be a permanent member of your service team here at Aon going forward. Mike is a partner here at Aon and one of our leaders in the public space in particular. So excited to have him on the team. And, you know, I'll pause here and turn it over to Mike just to provide a quick introduction of himself to you all.
Yeah, thanks, Peter. You stole my whole thunder. Good morning, good morning, everybody. Happy to be here. As Peter indicated, fifteen years with the, with the firm, I cannot get that, I hear that number, but I've been working with defined benefits, defined contribution plans since day one, my passion. Work with both corporate and public, public plans. And, and happy to be here today, looking forward to being a part of this relationship.
Great, good to have you on the team, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So maybe we can start off with an update of the capital markets. And we provided some numbers in our materials. We're looking at page six of the deck. The title should be Major Capital Markets Performance Summary. And we provided some more recent numbers in our materials just to talk about how markets have, have really reacted really since the end of October as well. On this page, you can see the backdrop in beige. Those trailing period returns are through the end of October thirty-first, 2020. And then all the way to the right in blue, those returns are more recent, so through November twenty-third, 2020. And you can see on a year-to-date basis, global stocks were, through the end of October, down slightly, about one point seven percent on a year-to-date basis through October. However, since the end of October, we really have seen markets rally, particularly risk assets, pretty strongly. Global, global stocks in the top row there, month-to-date in November, up eleven and a half percent, bringing the year-to-date number to nine point six percent. The pension has certainly benefited from this recent rally, not just in the global equity markets broadly, however, but also in particular segments that we did see really not perform all too well in 2020. Really what was driving markets leading up to the end of October were growth stocks, in particular, U.S. growth stocks. Since then, since the news of the election news and vaccine progress in response to COVID, we have seen much more breadth in the market. So we've seen value really come along strongly since the end of October. And we've seen other, other more downtrodden areas in the markets come along strongly. So small cap stocks in particular, you can see on a month-to-date basis, all the way to the right, about three rows down, up eighteen point three percent, so really benefiting domestic equities in particular from the news of a vaccine on the horizon. And, and that's really benefited your more smaller cap-oriented managers such as Kennedy and Times Square since the end of the month. And then also, non-U.S. stocks have performed quite well, month-to-date through, through November twenty-third. You can see non-U.S. developed up nearly fourteen percent over that time period in emerging market stocks, which have actually performed quite well, held up quite well really in 2020 so far, adding an additional ten and a half percent, bringing the year-to-date return to nearly twelve percent. So really strong returns in equities across the board now, year-to-day. And as I mentioned, with the, over the, over the last month and a half or so in particular, we really have seen more breadth in the market. So value stocks in particular are really returning well, whereas prior to that, we saw growth stocks really driving performance across the marketplace. Maybe flipping ahead to page seven. Really what this is looking at here, this is called a Fed dot plot. And what it's looking at and what it's telling you is on the bottom of the, the black chart that you see here on the axis there, you can see through 2023, the expectations for Fed fund rates continue to be very low. So in response to the COVID outbreak at the first part of the year, the Fed dropped the Fed funds rate to essentially zero. And since then, the news coming out of the Fed has really reinforced that they intend to remain lower for longer and maintain really that zero percent Fed funding rate until the foreseeable future, until we start seeing full employment and also until we start seeing inflation coming back into the economy. Historically, the Fed has had a two percent targeted inflation rate, which hasn't been met recently. So the Fed has indicated that they will let inflation run a little bit. So the Fed has indicated that they will let inflation run a little bit in order to meet that 2% inflation on an average basis over the long term. However, we continue, well, with these more stringent restraints, we expect the targeted interest rate to remain low for the Fed. And this is important for your fixed income managers, not just this page, on page seven, but on page eight as well. You all utilize active mandates within your fixed income portfolio, which we think is appropriate, allowing those managers to broad market in order to allocate where they see fit or where they see opportunities within the markets. And one of those places is being able to interpret the Fed forward-looking interest rates on the previous page. Then here on page eight, you can see what we're looking at in this line chart, are the historical spreads on the top chart, that investment-grade corporate credit trades over their treasury counterparts of the same maturity. Then on the bottom, high-yield corporates, how they, how those spreads trade to their same maturity treasuries. And you can see, circled here on the far right, the spike in spreads that we saw in the first part of this year, which you might expect with the economy shutting down in response to the COVID crisis. We saw investors demanding a lot more in return for their investments from corporate issuances compared to their treasury counterparts. However, those spreads have come in quite quickly. Really just took a couple of months for those spreads to come back in within their normal standard deviations of how they typically trade against their treasury counterparts. And that's another reason why we think it's important to have active management within your fixed income. Income research and management and Prudential in particular are able to tactfully invest throughout these markets and take advantage quickly and efficiently when spreads do dislocate in such a short period of time as we saw earlier this year. Then last comments on the market, page nine. A couple of charts here. On the left is the VIX index. What this is, is an indication or an expectation of volatility on the S&amp;P 500, forward-looking and really above 20. It's still an elevated expectation of volatility in equity markets. And equity market volatility has come down very significantly since the heights we saw in March. However, those expectations of volatility remain elevated going into the end of the year. And then on the right here, the S&amp;P 500 forward PE ratio is a measure of how expensive equities are. And you can see recently, equities have become more expensive compared to their historical PE ratios. But as I mentioned before, really what's been driving the increase in equity valuation have been those growth stocks lately. And there has been a little bit more room on a valuation basis for value-oriented managers. So we have seen more opportunity for your active managers to find better valuations in those more downtrodden spaces so far in 2020. Let me pause there and see if there's any questions on the markets before we get into the performance update.
No questions.
Okay, maybe flipping ahead at page 12. The next couple of pages, we look at the most recent numbers for you all, so the pension through the end of October. And then on the next page, we provide an estimated update of returns through that November 23rd time period. And then also, we'll look at the combined DC plans investments, how they've returned through the end of October 2020 as well. Total pension, market value up to $297 million at the end of October, compared to where the market value was at the end of the first quarter, when we saw markets sell off very significantly. The market value is up $44 million for the total pension. And over the trailing one-year period, the market value is up $17 million for the total pension. On a year-to-date basis, the total pensions returned 1 and 1/2% and over the trailing one-year period, 5.1%. Really, driving returns over those time periods have been U.S. large-cap equities. So that passive investment in the BlackRock Russell 1000 Index Fund has been the main driver of positive returns over the trailing one, three-year periods. However, we have seen, as I mentioned, a bit of a rotation since the end of October into more small-cap outperforming and more non-U.S. equity outperforming as well. Within domestic equity, active management is utilized within the small-cap equity allocation and the international equity allocation. And for the most part, over the trailing one-year period, active managers have been additive to performance relative to their benchmarks. On page 13, fixed income on a year-to-date basis of 5.2%, really holding up well and navigating the market well, where we saw the significant sell-offs and credit spread widening in the first quarter. Your managers' income research in particular and Prudential have both performed well and navigated the market tactically. And then the bottom of the page here, you can see the bullet point, through the end of November, or through November 23rd, the pension policy portfolio has returned an additional estimated 7% month-to-date. That brings the year-to-date return to 8 and 1/2% estimated for the total pension. Moving on to page 14, what we're looking at here are the combined DC plans, so the deferred compensation and defined contribution plan assets, over $105 million in the combined plans. Overall, we don't have any major concerns with the performance of each of the Vanguard funds utilized within the combined plans. In Tier One, as you all know, these are the target date funds, particularly for those participants who just want to allocate to their 401Ks or qualified DC plan and not have to worry about rebalancing or keeping very close attention to the markets. So these funds essentially de-risk a participant asset the closer they get to retirement. And you can see here, the funds have performed quite well. The first line there, the Target Retirement Income Fund, those are for the participants that are essentially in retirement. And on a year-to-date basis, where we saw 30% sell-off in equity markets to start 2020, held up quite well for those participants who need their assets to be there for them in their retirement years, up 4% actually on a year-to-date basis. And then at the bottom of the page, the Vanguard Target Retirement 260 Fund, for example, has much more equity exposure, which we think is appropriate for participants that have, 30-plus years until their retirement. On a year-to-date basis, pretty much flat on a year-to-date basis. However, that additional equity exposure really is additive to returns and growing those retirement assets over time. And you can see over that five-year period, 8.4% annualized return for those applications. Page 15, again, no major concerns here. The tier-two assets are passive investments that are meant to track their stated benchmarks. No concerns with any of those funds performing compared to their benchmarks. And then tier-three assets, these are the active managers available to participants within the DC plans, and they've performed quite well through the end of October on a year-to-date basis. All the funds returning very strong relative returns versus their stated benchmarks over those periods. So let me pause again and see if there's any questions on the October performance update.
Doesn't sound like there are any.
Okay. And if there's any questions, please feel free to interrupt me. Maybe just a couple of, just two slides I want to hit on for the quarterly performance update, since we did provide an update through, with more recent numbers through October. However, on page 18, you can see over the third quarter, total pension had a strong quarterly return of 4.8%, outperforming the benchmark and trailing one-year period, 8% return through the end of the quarter. Page 19, I thought was interesting, just showing the historical market values of the pension since the end of, or since the beginning of 2000. And you can see on the far right there, that dip in market value, how quickly that recovered in this most recent market sell-off. If you look back at 2008, 2009, it took a couple of years before the market value was able to recover, was able to recover on an assets basis from the global financial crisis. Here in 2020, I think the act passed by Treasury and the swift action of the Fed really helped bolster markets and helped markets be able to essentially digest COVID and the shutdowns and be able to look to the future and provide, and rebound quite quickly and significantly. And you can see your assets rebounding very significantly after the sell-off at the beginning of the year. As I mentioned, up $44 million in total assets since the end of the first quarter. So the next few slides are just updates through the end of the third quarter. Maybe the last couple items I'll touch on are pages 27 and 28. 27 are the fees for the pension fund compared to institutional, institutional peer fees that we see out in the marketplace, the median fee that we see other institutional peers receiving for those specific investment types. And on the bottom of the page here, the total pension plan, 47 basis point expense ratio, which is less, or three basis points less than their institutional peers' peer assets. One of the questions at the last committee meeting was the cash money market fund, 20 basis points, is that reasonable for that type of investment? And we believe it is. And also, you know, we confirmed with US Bank as well that the utilization, that, well, that the pension is in the lowest available money market fund. And part of the, part of the contract with US Bank is utilizing the First American Money Market Fund for the sweet vehicle in the pension plan. And you all are in the lowest available share class for this fund. Then lastly, on page 28, looking at the DC plan fund fee comparison, very low fees coming from Vanguard. They are very well-known for being a low-cost provider in the space. We think they do a great job doing that. The bottom line at the end, at the bottom of this table, 14 basis points in expenses for the combined DC plans investment managers compared to the universe meeting of 32 basis points. So significant savings for your participants in their DC plan investments as well. So let me pause again and see if there's any questions.
I'm going to have a question at the end of your.
Did you hear that, Peter?
I'm sorry, I'm having some trouble hearing.
That's all right.
Would you mind repeating that?
I think he was cutting out. Trustee Singer said he's going to have a question when you are done. Was there anything else you wanted to go over?
No, I don't believe so. And, you know, if anything comes out of that conversation, please do feel free to reach out to us, and we're happy to, happy to help.
Okay, trustee Singer, go ahead with your question.
So I think, I'm getting feedback, can people turn their mics off? I, I think this goes back, that Mike and I were the only two trustees around when this decision was made. But we, you know, based on our recommendation of Aon, we almost, we almost lost over $30 million, public money, which has continued to bother me. And I said, since the last meeting, I think it was since the last meeting, I got ahold of a very detailed lawsuit that was filed against this French investment firm that we went with in Aon. I sent it to Tim, and then Tim, for recent, very recently, Tim sent to me Aon's sort of official response. And I have not read it yet. But I, you know, to my, I think our current, what's important now is to get some sense of, you know, what lesson did Aon learn from this? And do we have some, some reason to feel comfortable that whatever went wrong? So I, can you concisely educate the board about what happened and what steps have been taken to try to avoid it happening again? It wasn't just, I want the board to understand, it wasn't like stocks go down and they go up. I mean, we, this was a meltdown. I mean, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we would have lost like all our money or almost all our money, so we couldn't have like written it back up.
All right, Peter, did you catch?
So, introduction, if you could.
So Peter and Mike, I know we had a little feedback there.
This is Mike. I, I think I caught the question. And Tim, I know Peter had sent along a deck for trustee Singer to absorb as it relates to our due diligence process. So hopefully some good information to you to better understand what our, what our process is. You know, as far as lessons learned, I don't know, this is obviously an ongoing process right now, so I don't know if the lessons learned are all of that clear. I mean, I think I'll speak for our manager research team that feels that the due diligence process and the rigor that we put on investment strategies before recommending them to our clients is extremely robust, I would say as good as any in the industry. This particular case with Allianz, in our view, the manager deviating from what our understanding of their stated strategy and expected risk profile is. And there were risks in that portfolio that, in our minds, should not have been there. And trustee Singer, you're right, this particular strategy during a period where equities were falling 30 or 40%, what was down more than that? Because there were supposed to be tail risk hedges in place that were not. And those tail risk hedges were supposed to protect the portfolio from significant losses. And our view is that the strategy that was employed by Allianz through this crisis was not consistent with what our belief of it was. And that's really the concise answer. You know, you're reading about a lawsuit, trustee Singer, I understand that. There's, there's a lot of, I guess, ongoing noise as it relates to this particular strategy. So we can't comment too much on, on the specifics, you know, as it's ongoing. But, you know, I mean, I'll stand by our manager research's process and diligence with how they view managers. And look at this as a one-off, a unique case where a strategy just simply did not perform the way we and they thought that it would. I think the final thing is, you know, I'm just, the clients that have invested in this particular strategy did suffer losses through the result of this, well, they have a suite of products. I guess I'm thankful that you all, you know, did not have to experience that. That certainly worked out, worked out, worked out well. And I'm good on that, and we have to go forward without that, without that history.
I, I must say, I, I mean, I guess I'm not answering my answer, but I don't find it satisfactory. I mean, because as we rely almost, I mean, Tim provides an overlay of due diligence, but really we rely on Aon. And, you know, yes, markets go down and they go up. But, you know, to, for us to have become within inches of investment become within inches of investing in putting substantial amount of assets in investment that was on, that became literally worthless, I don't think any of us understood that. I know I didn't, that there was a significant risk that that could happen. And if that had been explained to us, I, I don't think any of us would have approved it. I don't think Tim would have approved it. So it, you know, it obviously, Aon didn't understand that this thing could go bust. And that really bothers me. And I, I really has, I was a big, I was very impressed with Aon when you guys came on. And this, I'm being very honest with you, has really shaken my confidence in your organization. So I'm going to read what Tim forwarded to me. The idea that I could have participated in this decision where MSDU have lost $30 million, it just really, really bothers me. So that's it.
Well, I can appreciate that.
Jim, what's the name of that, that French investment outfit? Is it Allianz, you said?
It's Allianz.
It's, if you want to look at the lawsuit, which is extremely detailed, the complaint, you know, I can send it to you or Tim can send it to you. There's very detailed allegations of what went wrong, what Aon did wrong.
I can, I can send that. I have it. Was that trustee Evans?
It is. If you could send that to me, please.
Sure, I will send that to you when we are done with the meetings this morning.
I'm interested in seeing that as well, Tim.
I can send that to everybody, to all the trustees. I will send that to all the trustees. Is there anything else? Okay, Peter and Mike, thank you for your time this morning. Mike, again, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
And we will, I'm sure we'll follow up with you with any, with any more questions. And we'll talk to you soon.
Okay, thanks for your time.
All right, the next few items are mine. So I'm going to move on to the operating portfolio update. That is the colorful grid, four squares that we look at every month, just looking at our operating investments. So kind of highlights here, the portfolio amount is 541 million. That's about 45 million less than it was last month, mostly because of a large debt service payment that was due in November. The maturities and weighted average maturities for both the portfolio and the benchmark did not change a whole lot. Yield to maturity for our portfolio went up about six basis points since last month. We're at 1.2%. That's significantly higher than the benchmark, primarily because the benchmark turns over every, the entire portfolio turns over every month. Interest rates are very, very low, especially that one to three-year treasury range that the benchmark is. Our portfolio has some maturities that are longer and shorter than that, but overall our average maturity is much higher than the benchmark, although we're not out as far. And again, that's because we have investments that we've made one and two years ago that go out a couple of years. So we'd locked in some higher rates before they, they fell. And that's just kind of the way we normally ladder our, our maturities. So when you see interest rates go the other way, we will also go up slower than the benchmark does, just as we're going down much more slowly right now. The sector allocation, which is in the upper right, you can see we are within all of our policy limits. Those aren't huge changes from last month. We have a little bit more in US Treasuries, a little bit less in commercial paper. That's more of a safety thing. And then the maturity distribution at the bottom just shows the difference in maturities between the benchmark and our portfolio. The 61% in the zero to six months is, is higher than we typically are. Again, that's more of a safety thing and also just a function of we spent down most of our bond funds. We'll see these numbers shift a little bit next month because we're going to be issuing some debt here this week that will raise the overall amount in the portfolio. It'll raise the debt project fund amount. And so we'll see some, we'll see some changes here, although most of that will stay short because those are going to be project funds that we expect to use over the next year to pay for capital projects. Any questions on the operating fund portfolio? All right, hearing none, I'll move on to the banking services, RFP. So you should have, the next thing in your packet should be some information on an RFP that was recently issued. So we went out, last time we did this was five years ago, a request for proposal for, for banking account services. Those would be things like deposit services, checking, electronic payment and associated services, positive pay, which is a fraud prevention tool, internet access, reporting, check issuance, everything related to just having business bank accounts. We assumed that we'd hold approximately 20 million. This bank, winning bank, will also have to handle a lot of our safekeeping of investments and collateral, provide some kind of interest or earnings credit rate. Typically in business account, banks will provide something called earnings credit rate. And what that is, it acts kind of like interest, except it only goes to offset fees. And so it lowers what you pay out of pocket for fees, but if you have, hold too much in the bank, you don't earn anything over the fees that were incurred. That's pretty typical in, in, in business accounts. And we also, one of the, well, I'll get to it the next page. On the summary, we did send this RFP, it went out to 17 banks. We received six qualified responses. The range of expected costs, and this was over a five-year period, ranged from about 235 to over $750,000, again, total over five years. That doesn't include federal deposit insurance assessments, as well as the earnings credit that I talked, just talked about. But at the low end of that cost range, which is where the winning bidder was, we expect monthly service cost to actually be about zero because the balances we hold in the bank, the credit to earn should offset, should offset the fees. The next page just goes through some of the criteria that we looked at. So cost of services was the highest weighting. All the banks that are going to apply or that we would even consider are all able to do the types of services that we're looking for. So costs are very important. The technical capacity compatibility is just making sure that they can interface with our Oracle system, our accounting system, so that we can do reconciliations and keep track of the general ledger transactions. Capacity required services, I already talked about the services we're looking at. Collateral is very important as a government entity. Any bank that is holding deposits for us is required to put up collateral. Financial strength of the institution, obviously important. And then we looked also at the Community Reinvestment Act rating, that CRA rating, that act has been around a long time, since the 1970s, and truly there to prevent discriminatory practices, especially, and so there's a regulatory body that rates these banks in their, in their local markets. So the winner of this RFP and the recommendation that we're going to bring before you next month is an ordinance entered into another contract with US Bank. They are the incumbent bank. They've been handling our banking services for the last five years. They're able to handle everything that we want them to do. We're currently working with them on increasing electronic payments and trying to get out or reduce the amount of paper payments that we make there. It says outstanding CRA rating. Not only was it outstanding, the actual rating is called outstanding. That's the highest rating you can get in a CRA review. And so they have the highest rating. And then they also had, received the largest of the group tied, but there were a number of banks that, they all submit their women and minority, local workforce. And so US Bank also received a multiplier on their score for their hiring practices, as did a few other banks. But that's something that also helped them in the score. So usually we do a five-year contract, but banking services is obviously very important to what we do, how we move money, the safekeeping of money. So this one, we actually want to go up out to eight years. It's actually a three-year contract with five option years. So there will be opportunities to do an RFP earlier if necessary. We have done that in the past when, you know, if prices do end up moving or something changes in the quality of service we're getting, we have RFP'd this before the contract ends up. But just for continuity purposes, we're looking for up to an eight-year contract this time with US Bank. One of the things that US Bank offered was an earnings credit rate that's equal to the average Fed funds rate with a floor of 30 basis points. Other banks did not offer a floor that high, and it was kind of up to the discretion of the bank and when or how much they changed the earnings credit rate. So this is something that gives us a little bit more confidence that we're going to have a competitive rate all the time, offsets fees. They are not charting us any federal deposit insurance fees for up to five years. And then they've also provided a credit to offset some of the costs of integrating some of the new services that we're looking at. So again, we're going to be bringing an ordinance to you next week, asking you for approval to enter into a contract, banking services contract with US Bank. Any questions on that? All right, I'm going to then move on to the next two items. I'll kind of hit it once. I believe we have Jason Terry on the line. He is our bond counsel from Gilmore &amp; Bell, and he'll be ready to step in if, if he needs to. But we, next week are also going to bring to you for introduction, two new SRF loans, 2021A and 2021B for introduction this month and adoption in, in January. The Missouri Department of Natural Resources Intended Use Plan was just published about a month ago. It has about 500 million of loan funds available for Missouri municipal entities. We've actually been allocated a large portion of that for some of the projects that we have going on. And so what we're looking for in the two, 2021A loan is about 63 million for phase one of a project, which we'll talk about in, in a minute. And 2021B is another $41 million for a public INI reduction, which is just continuation of some work we've been doing. So periodically, every couple of years, we'll come back looking for some SRF approval for an SRF loan for, for those projects. So that's over 100 million of SRF loans. These are lower costs than the capital market loans we do and lower our overall cost of borrowing, which is good for, for the ratepayers. So the 2021A loan, which is the 63 million, this is phase one. The actual, this is actually a tunnel project. Total cost of the tunnel is going to be over 180 million. So we're just doing this in, in two separate loans. We're coming, looking for approval for 63 million SRF loan now. And then next year or sometime in the future, we'll be looking for the remaining 120 million or so. These are large SRF loans. We usually don't make them that are quite this big, but we're happy to be, have the opportunity to do so, again, because of the low cost. The tunnel is about 36,000 feet long, eight feet in diameter, 100 feet below ground. We'll use a tunnel boring machine again. So tunnels by this point, I know are not new to you all, but this is a different kind of project that we typically fund with SRF. So I credit our engineering group, who's been really active, talking to the state and kind of helping us pitch this product and, and winning them over. The expected financial terms, if we can go to the next slide. Typically, we do 20-year loans with SRF. It's a subsidized rate. You might remember our last loan had a rate of just 80 basis points, although the state does add an annual admin fee of 50 basis points. So the all-in rate was 1.3%. Cost of issuance for these two loans is under $700,000. That's less than if we had gone to the capital markets. We'd expect to start paying, making principal payments by 2025. That's also a little bit later than typical with these kind of loans. And then with SRF loans, because the money comes from the state with some federal capitalization, there are some reporting requirements that impacts, that impacts engineering a bit. So they're always our partners on these kinds of things. And they'll have to do a little bit extra work, but it's, again, the cheap money is good for ratepayers. And then we'll use local UMB bank as paying agent, escrow agent, that's who the SRF program uses. So what this is going to do for our debt authorization, if you remember, in 2016, voters approved 900 million of bond authorization. We've had a few other previous issuances. After these issuances, we will have 473 million left. We're actually going out later this week for another 120 million, a competitive loan per amount. So that's going to reduce it even further than what's here. And then another issuance next year will use up the bulk of the remaining authorization, which is why we're going in April to the voters, looking for more authorization. And then the final page, again, the actions we're asking for here is introduction of the ordinances authorizing these two direct loan agreements. And then in January, we'll, we'll ask for adoption. Any question on the SRF loans? Excuse me, all right. The next item is also mine. Depending on the packet you have, you either have a detailed sheet or the actual resolution. This is a reimbursement resolution. So for one of these SRF loans, we may actually incur some costs before the loan closes. And for federal tax reasons, we want to pass this resolution or introduce this resolution next month. Just to note that we're going to start incurring costs for one of the projects. The federal tax rules require that we note what projects we're going to be using the funds for. And since the loan, excuse me again, won't actually close until after we've incurred some of these costs, this resolution will be our formal notice that, of the projects that we'll be using loan funds for, and will allow us to reimburse some of those costs from the loan proceeds. We've done this before in the past, so this is not really an unusual activity for us. Any questions about that? All right, hearing none, I am going to turn it over to Marion for the final two items. Jason, thank you for, for your time. I'm glad we didn't need you.
Absolutely. Have a great day.
You too.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Good morning, trustees. The first item that I'll present is an adjustment review report, which is for the first quarter of the fiscal year. It is required by our ordinance that we present to the board, account adjustments that exceed $5,000. So for this particular report, which again is from July of 2020 through the end of September of 2020, we had a grand total of 46 account adjustments that exceeded $5,000. That total was, total amount was approximately $387,000. The bulk of those adjustments, you can find in the first section, which is labeled adjustments. Most of those are water agency adjustments, and those are things like either leak adjustments that the water companies have reported to us, and we've subsequently made adjustments to sewer billings, or they were accounts in which the water was turned off and we needed to make adjustments as a result of that. So you'll see 25 water agency adjustments, which totaled about 215,000. We did, then had various, as I mentioned before, adjustments for water off, which totaled about 58. And then billing error adjustments, which were six of those, which totaled approximately $63,000. In the next section, you'll see two, I'm sorry, four write-offs, which totaled approximately $11,500. These are properties that were sold through a sheriff sale or county tax sale, and MSD has to write off any account balances on our books. So again, we had four of those totaling about $11,500. And finally, we had one settlement, which totaled approximately $5,900. Settlements are typically approved by the Adjustment Review Committee. We had a delinquent customer that we agreed to write, to write off late charges, and they paid principal amounts on their sewer billings plus any additional legal cost. Are there any questions that, that I can answer regarding the report?
Why did we write off that particular customer?
I'm sorry?
Why did we write off that particular customer?
Are you talking about the final one that I mentioned? Well, typically, that customer would have owed some portion of their late, late fees. We didn't write off their account balance. We required them to pay in full their account balance and any legal cost relating to the delinquent account collection process. And so in order to facilitate an agreement for a payment, we will sometimes agree to write off late charges. Any other questions? Okay, if not, I will move to the last item that I have, which is our finance key performance indicators as of October 2020. So I'll start with the first. Let's all start with the first section in the upper left-hand corner, our budget status report. We are tracking budget to actual for the three categories listed, debt service, operating expenditures, and our capital program. In total, we are running right now about $38 billion favorable. The bulk of that is in our capital program, which is approximately $23 million below budget. Our operating expenditures are projected to be about $8 million below budget. And finally, our debt service expenditures are projected to be $5 million below budget. So again, in total, we're projecting for the fiscal year to come in about $38 million below budget. In the top right-hand corner, I will draw your attention to our user charge forecast. Those are billings for sewer services. Our residential customers are tracking right at budget, actually a little bit more than budget. We budget it $312.1 million. We are forecasting that those revenues will come in at $312.6 million, about $500,000 above budget. On the flip side of that, our commercial revenues are, right now, projecting to be about $16.9 million below budget. That is primarily due to the impact of the pandemic, when commercial customers have either shut down or they have had to curtail their operations, which has resulted in less water usage, which of course impacts our sewer billing. In the lower left-hand corner, this graph shows our debt service coverage ratios. And basically, what this is depicting is that we are exceeding our required ratios as outlined in our bond covenants. We are also exceeding what we had projected in our last rate proposal. So our debt service coverages are, at this point in time, very strong. And we hope that when we conclude the fiscal year, that we will maintain the ratios that you see here today. And then finally, we track.
Marion, can I?
Yes, Jim.
Marion, can I?
Yes, go ahead, Jim. I can barely hear you, though.
Oh. Marion, I wondered, you know, we're spending, we're going to have to spend more money on that tunnel project along the Mississippi River. Has that been factored into your budget projections?
They are, yes. That would be included in our capital budget projections.
I mean, it still looks, I mean, everything looks really good in spite of having to spend that additional money. It's sort of what I'm getting from all this.
Yes, right now, for our capital program, it's projected to, the expenditures are projected to be $23 million below budget.
Okay, I mean, it's.
We have seen some favorable bids come in for other projects as well. So that certainly helps to offset.
No, thank you.
Sure. Finally, in the lower right-hand corner, we track our total delinquencies and our average collection period. Our average collection period typically runs anywhere from 57 to 59 days. You'll see a slight uptick from FY '20. We're right now at about 59 days. Our delinquent portfolio balance has actually dropped a little bit. We are still, though, in excess of about $83 million roughly is what our total delinquencies are from the inception of sewer billings back in the 1950s. So it's a long period of time here, but that's currently where we stand. So are there any questions that I can answer regarding this report? Okay, if not, that concludes what I had on the agenda, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marion. If there's no further business, the next meeting is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, January 5th, 2020. And can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
The meeting is concluded. Thank you.
All right. If everybody's ready, Trustee Wilson, I believe this is your meeting.
Okay. Good morning, trustees and directors. Welcome to the Stakeholder Relations Committee meeting, December 2020. I'd ask to start with a roll call.
All right, well, not that all trustees are present.
Okay. The chair has no comments. I'd ask to.
I don't think they're all here yet. I don't think they're back. I don't think the trustees attending remotely are all back.
Okay, I can't, I can't. They're not on the screen, so I can't see them. Thank you. I'm sorry, Trustee Wilson, can we wait just a minute?
We'll wait a couple of minutes. We'll wait until they get back. Can anyone see the screen?
I can.
Okay, well, would you? We'll start over again. We didn't get very far. We've had the roll call. The chair has no comments, and I'd ask for a motion to approve the committee meeting. If you need a minute to look at those, please do.
So moved.
Got a motion second? Okay, thank you. The amendments are approved. The next item on the agenda is discussion by Ms. Coleman, and she'll have the next two items that are on the agenda.
Good morning, trustees. Hopefully, you can hear me. The first ordinance that I'm going to bring to your attention is ordinance 15598. It is for the medical services for the district staff. We are entering into a new contract with BJC. BJC has been our long-term medical provider for pre-employment drug screens, workers' comp. They also do physical therapy for those worker comp situations and any random drug screens that we have for accidents. This contract will go into a four-year contract that we want to enter in year one, going into December of 20, excuse me, going into year one, starting February 1st of 2021. The cost of this budget, the cost of this contract would be in minimum $275,000 to a maximum of a half a million. It's based off of usage and how much volume BJC receives. So we're asking for your permission to go into contract with them, and this will be presented at the board meeting. What questions do any of the trustees have about ordinance 15598 for the services with BJC? Okay, well, if there are no questions, I'll move on to ordinance number 15598. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. To ordinance number 15599. This is for the compensation ordinance. As you know, we were in union negotiations, and the unions negotiated, asked me at SEIU for a 2.4 increase, starting in fiscal year 2021 through fiscal year 2024. We are going to, this is presented at the board, it will be introduction, adoption, with an emergency clause. The reason for that, trustees, is we want to get this information in before the end of the payroll tax year. Questions about, and also for both schedules, I'm sorry, I don't know if I said that, Schedule A and Schedule B, employees would be receiving a 2.4 increase for those fiscal years that I named. What questions do you have about this introduction, adoption, and emergency clause ordinance that'll be presented relatively soon?
You said the, this is 15599, was for 2021 through 24?
Yes, it'll be for those fiscal years. The calendar years are listed on the detail sheet, but it's actually for fiscal year '21, '22, '23, and '24.
Okay, the additional comments on that item show '20 through '23.
They do, yes, sir, and that'll be correct.
Okay.
Are there any other questions about the ordinance? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Meyer?
Okay, the last item on the agenda today is the last page of your packet. It's a detail sheet which supports the introduction of proposed ordinance number 15597. This ordinance will authorize the district to enter into a lease with Bruce Oakley. A little background of, I don't know if everybody has a aerial view that has property that is, Laura, do we have this? Okay, okay, I'm sorry. I'll just give you a little background then. So since the early 1980s, a company called Lang Stegman has leased property from the district that's located along the Mississippi River and Angelica Street. It's just south of our Bissell Water Treatment Plant. In April of 2019, a company named Bruce Oakley bought out Lang Stegman and assumed the existing lease that we had with Lang Stegman. That was all part of, an assignment was an option that was in the existing lease, and so Bruce Oakley, Lang Stegman, and MSD entered into that assignment. That was a board action back in 2019. So since that time, Bruce Oakley is now requesting to lease some additional property from the district. It's a approximately four-acre vacant piece of property that's located just south of Angelica Street and just to the west of the property that Bruce Oakley is currently leasing. So it's a four-acre vacant lot that's contiguous to the property that Bruce Oakley currently leases. So this ordinance will give the district authorization to enter into that lease. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any new business or other business? If not, the next meeting for the Stakeholders Committee is Tuesday, January 5th, and I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned. It's been the pleasure of my life.